So I'll just call the special meeting for the Board of Ed to order for November 5th, 2020 at 5:03. I don't know, I can't remember if Jackie had told some of you, but Jeff is dealing with an issue with the middle school. We have a faculty person, one of the Kivas that tested positive for COVID. And so he's in the process of dealing with, I guess they've got the game plan down and they're in the process of getting communications all out and so forth. So he will join us hopefully, he said hopefully very shortly, but we should carry on. So that's the update and I'm sure he'll update us on how things are going there. So, okay, so with that, I guess, and I'll turn it over to Joelle, who's gonna hopefully guide us through a productive little workshop here, helping to kind of continue to advance our diversity and inclusion training. So, Joelle.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity to be back with all of you this evening. And we are going to, to a certain extent, pick up where we left off, do a little bit of a recap so that we can refresh some of the things that we talked about. Also, Jeff shared the document that many of you worked to put together in terms of the conversations that you held after I was there. And so what we're gonna do tonight for the biggest portion of our time together is probably break you into two groups. And we're gonna spend some time thinking about how to then take some of those steps that were articulated and putting them into action. I'm gonna take you through the sort of standard steps of a diversity, equity, and inclusion journey. And then hopefully as we, as we wrap up this evening, you'll have some clarity about potentially how you might want to move forward. Okay, so. Sorry. All right, so here is the PowerPoint.
So Joelle?
Yes.
Daddy, could I have one like moment here just to share a very impactful experience I had today?
Absolutely.
Context for this?
Absolutely.
I'll just go through this very briefly. I was looking, I was impressed with, I was looking at the statistics, the voting statistics from our relative towns. And I went through East Lime and was really impressed, you know, we've got like 13,000 registered voters. There's 11,000 votes cast, 86% participation rate. I compared that with New London, which has 18,000 registered voters more than we do. They had only 5,000 votes cast, over 32% of their population. And I looked at the white, non-white breakout of the two towns. And it's like 85% white in East Lime and it's 44% non-white.
Barry, I can't hear you very well. I'm sorry. Maybe it's my computer.
Well, I must, I'm like, I don't know what I can do. I can talk louder or whatever.
There you go. There you go.
So anyway, though, it reminded me so much of the times when I was working back decades ago in model cities, where we had millions of dollars to work with, but we had a, there was a sense of the community we're working with of how strong the forces of structural racism were against the folks that we were working with. Because there's this sense that there is nothing they can do that, and you know, I was thinking about New London with so many people just not even getting out to vote. And if you ask them, probably the reason was that there's no sense of possibility, like, why should I engage in this? Because the whole system is stacked against me. And I think is one of the things that thing we go, we have to work with as educators is try to figure out like, how do we create our schools in a way? So we develop a sense first of appreciation of the structural racism, but also among everyone, a sense of agency that the world is not hopeless, that they actually can do things on their own, in their communities and surrounded by the communities to address the issues of structural racism. So it's a huge issue and it's been grappling with it and it's not gonna be taken care of by a course. It's not gonna be taken care of by a curriculum. It's gonna be taken care of by a whole restructuring of our school system. So that's what's been on my mind.
Just a small thing, Barry, that's been on your mind, just a, you know, a small issue, right? Very, very significant, particularly within, I'm being facetious. Very significant in the context of the times that we are in. Certainly the, and I did not want us to begin without, and so that was really perfect. I didn't want us to begin without acknowledging the uncertainty that we are in the midst of on the national stage. And simply that same sentiment that Barry shared in the context of, you know, feeling discounted from the system is, you know, is clearly some of what we've been hearing for the last several months and really beyond in different ways. And so I think that that is the perfect anecdote to share as we begin to do this work. What can we really do here in East Lime? As we look at the breadth of the issues around systemic racism and not only, you know, as we have experienced them over the course of the summer in terms of specific acts of violence, but more broadly, the impacts to education, healthcare, housing, all of those things that have implications, particularly as it relates to the school district and what opportunities are made available to young people to understand the breadth of who we are as humanity. So thank you, Barry, for sharing that because it couldn't have been more perfect as a way to kick off tonight. What I've sort of entitled this session is taking next steps. And, you know, a lot of what I heard from, in talking with Tim and talking with Jeff regarding some of the feedback that was shared via the questions that you all answered last month was a real sense of urgency, a real sense of what can we do, coupled with in some instances, a bit of despair, a bit of hopelessness around what can we do, right? Because of who we are and where we're positioned. And the way that I approach it is that I think that there is something that each of us can do without a doubt to begin to dismantle systemic racism and to enhance learning for each of us, for our families, our community, and certainly for the entire school district, one step at a time. So it's really about taking deliberate next steps to move us to action. So what I want to do actually, and thank you Barry for starting us out in that way, but it's also to just check in. The last time I think we did one word about how we were feeling. And, and I think that, you know, we could probably do the same tonight as well. But what I, what I wanted to ask you all to do, since you are in your home setting this time, is to think about your must have. So as you've been sort of sequestered to your home and you find yourself in your probably preferred Zoom position, what is the one thing that you must have with you as you are sitting on all of these significant meetings conducted via Zoom? So I'll start and model the way and say, Joelle, and I, I'll also share how I'm feeling. I'm tired, not just physically, but emotionally and psychologically tired. And my must have, which my background is preventing me from showing, hold on, I'll take it off so you can see, is my water cup. Now, I have a couple of different ones. This one used to say something, but my destructive child took all of the letters off except for one. My former assistant gave it to me because we were two people who came out of corporate America who were working in higher ed. And so what it once had was my initials and SOCO, so corporate. But now there's just the O from CO because my child thought that the stickers were inactivity. So this is my must have. It is always here with me at my desk. All right, who wants to go next?
Certainly, I'll go next. My must have is my cellphone because my daughter-in-law is at her due date.
Oh, wow.
Today. And we're waiting to hear, and they're gonna do a home, home birth as well. So, so when the phone rings, we all jump.
Wow. Well, I'm glad you let us know that too. That's important. That's important. Thanks, Tim. Who'd like to go next?
I'll go. My is, I'm the same as you. I always have either a water bottle, a water mug, something that's always next to me. So that's the same. I'm the same. Right? Do I always have a cup?
Right. Stay hydrated. Absolutely. Thank you. Who would like to go next?
I can jump in. My must have since now working from home is my computer remote. I used to just use the trackpad and the getting like the actual mouse was a game changer for me and being able to navigate meetings effectively. I will also name, I'm feeling a little bit scattered right now. I am home alone with my one-year-old and three-year-old. So there is a chance I might have to turn my camera off to tend to them, but I'm gonna do my best to be present.
Not a problem. Thank you. We understand. Who's next?
I'll be next. I'm Jill. And like you and Tim, I have to have my cellphone. And, and like Jamie too, I've turned my water. I can't function without water. I'm addicted to it.
Which is a good thing to be addicted to.
Well, I don't know. My doctor thinks I drink too much water.
Too much? Wow.
Yeah, because my, I have some sodium, sodium issues, so.
Ah, okay.
But that's too much personal information. I guess you can't, I never knew that, so.
Thank you. Yeah, who knew? See, we learn something every day. I see Jeff has joined us. Jeff, we are checking in and sharing our must have, what it is that we have with us in our Zoom desk reality that we have to have, that we have with us at all times. Candace, yeah?
I am Candace, and the Zoom position from home is not my optimal, to be honest with you. I don't really have a necessity other than trying to keep everyone quiet so I can concentrate and focus. iPhone is in front of me, getting real-time information. My kid happens to be part of the Osprey team that is being looked at for the COVID. So just getting the information and that's it.
Wow. So real time. Yep. And I, I think you all probably heard my son having a meltdown at one point as we were beginning to. So you know, I understand that he's now outside on the porch. Thankfully, the weather is warm.
Right.
Yeah, I can go next. I sit a lot behind WebEx and Zoom calls. That is most of my day. And what I have are, I keep three rocks with me. They're kind of smooth, different texture because it helps me keep my focus on meetings when my hands are doing something, which you can read it a lot about what that means. But it does help me, I stay focused when I'm using the rocks and squeezing them and doing different things.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's great. That is great. Let's see, who should go next?
I can go.
Catherine?
My must haves, I always have to have a pen and some paper. I am an obsessive note taker, just underscoring other people's comments, what they say, words that are repeated frequently. Helps me to stay focused and engaged. So I always have to have paper and pen.
Great. Thank you. I think Jeff, you and Barry might be the last folks to go. And Barry's got his camera off, so maybe perhaps you can go, Jeff.
Sure. Happy to. Barry, I think just put something in the, in the chat. But for me, it's water. Was either water or coffee with me. I now have my glasses because I can no longer see when I'm looking at the computer. So I'm feeling older over the last eight months because I've moved to having to wear glasses all the time now. So that's, those two are probably the most important elements I can't be without right now.
Very critical. Absolutely. And last but not least, Barry.
I had to deal with a, we're having, our bathroom is being redone here. And I had to deal with a situation related to that for a minute. That's why I had to get off and go up and take care of something. And so I'm a little bit scattered right now. I just said that just tried, the thing I had to try to keep with me is a sense of self. That's as simply as I can state it.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everybody, for checking in and sharing what you've got to have with you. Thankfully, you all have those things with you that you need so that we will be able to engage this evening. So just a reminder, you probably remember these ground rules from the last time. Just a refresher, again, I'm not gonna go through them, but just as a reminder, as we have these conversations, and I think you all have really begun to model excellent behavior around dialogue with one another. So certainly, just a refresher around those things that will be important as we get deeper into the topic area. Okay, assuming everyone is still good with these guidelines. Actually, earlier today, I did a session with some folks in an organization and someone added kindness. Usually I ask if anyone has anything to add and very few times and that I've had someone add something. But I will share that with you all as well. She added kindness and I thought that was helpful, particularly in this time, in this moment. So we will move forward, having refreshed ourselves around those guidelines. And I know some of the answers to this question because as I referenced, I've seen the materials that you all talked and put together in terms of summary. But let's talk a little bit about what did you do? What has happened since the last time? You know, I know that there's been some conversation, but when you think about your own experiences as you walked away from that session, gosh, a month ago, over a month ago now, what did you or what have you begun to do differently? Is there anyone who would share or as you reflect upon the time since we were together last? Is there anything that you've done differently as it relates to the conversation that we began? Anyone?
Well, I can, I can start or whatever. I've been, what I've been doing differently is I have been basically drawing on some of the expertise that Barry has in terms of trying to understand more about the, about the topic that we're discussing and in particular on critical race theory in education. I was amazed, I went online and started just zooming around and how much information is out there in terms of, of trying to look at these things. And I was, it was incredibly impressed with, with a review article over the 20-year history on critical race theory, which I'd never heard about before. So I just, I guess differently, I just, I felt like somewhat humbled in terms of, of my knowledge in this area just by starting to look and read. So that's something more differently.
No, absolutely, right? One of the things that we talked about last time was just the fullness of all of the information or knowledge that's out there, right? And how much we don't even know that we don't know, right? So absolutely, a perfect example of that, yeah. Anyone else? Thanks so much, Tim. Have something to share as you reflect upon our experiences together last time? What is something that you perhaps have begun to do differently or that you've done differently?
I can share. I think one of the things, so I joined the Diversity and Inclusion Committee that we have in our district and it has been really interesting and helpful to have the chance to listen to our teachers, students, and parents on their experiences and reflections and like hopes for, for our district in terms of our initiatives here. And so just trying to dial up the listening before we pivot to action planning.
Well, that's great. Really important, right? Because as you think about doing the work or the self-discovery that, you know, we engaged in, how do you translate that, right? And now you're having an opportunity to sort of explore it with the teachers and students, et cetera. So that's awesome. Other folks who else might want to chime in and share, what have you perhaps done differently since our time together?
I guess the thing that I can say is just trying to keep it at the front of my thinking. So, you know, just like anything else, unless you make it part of your daily conscience, consciousness, I don't know that it's possible to make it, to make a change of it. So just being aware of it. And I know that being anti-racist, you need to think about it so that you can explore how you react or act, how you perceive things and trying to filter it through different lenses, perhaps, when I'm having different experiences depending upon who I'm speaking with. And just trying to kind of peel back a little bit of my listening skills, perhaps, to a better level so that I can be more sensitive and more in touch, more keen, perhaps.
That, that's great. Catherine, active and engaged listening, right? So just increasing awareness and keeping things front of mind and top of mind, absolutely, right? Things that maybe perhaps you weren't thinking about prior to last time session. So now there's some greater awareness when you hear things, right? Or you see things, oh, hadn't thought about it in that way. Absolutely. Anyone else?
I'll just capitalize on what, you know, Kate said, that listening aspect. I had shared an article with the Equity and Inclusion Committee called Willing to be Disturbed. And it talked a lot about, you know, the listening component. And it just kind of struck me. I really liked the, the article. Actually, I can send it to the full board too. And it just talked about, you know, our ability and our focus on really engaging in, you know, active listening.
Yeah, absolutely. Really, really critical. I think people sort of take for granted the practice of listening. So it's really, really critical in our, particularly in dialogue. Yeah, Barry?
Continue to think about how deep and systemic this issue is. And I get frustrated with reading about the relatively superficial level of many of the initiatives that schools take on to try to address it.
Absolutely. So really, really recognizing just how deeply this sits and having to recognize needing to peel back layers oftentimes to find the root of what you can do to move forward. Absolutely, absolutely. So thinking about, that was the perfect segue into the second question, you know, as a leadership team, what do you feel ready to do next to change the culture of the organization? What are, what are some things as you think about, and this is a lot of what we'll spend time tonight on, but what do you feel ready to do next?
I'm not gonna go first again this time, so somebody else is gonna have to step up.
So I, I would say, I think we probably need to dig deeper, at least for me, to understand what is. So what's there? You know, we've heard some, we've gotten feedback from local leaders, I guess, young leaders who are graduates of our school system. We've gotten feedback to their experiences where they were marginalized. So I guess I feel like we really need to think about, and again, again, peel back, like, what is it and how can we begin to become more and more aware of it? From a curriculum level, from a social level, from, you know, if people are feeling bullied or marginalized, from the academic component, you know, are we calling on certain kids first always? Because for whatever reason, you know, so kind of leveling the bars, for lack of a better description, to help everybody feel as they're in the game, they're part of the game, they're a valued member within the team, for the team, on the team, that kind of thing.
Absolutely.
And I don't know how we would do, go about getting some of that information. Again, you know, we're always saying survey, survey, survey. And maybe we already know a lot of that and maybe we have a lot of that anecdotal. We already have the anecdotal evidence from young recent graduates. But I think it's taking it the next step forward. And I'll just stop there.
Eric, I'll go next and maybe build a little on what Kate had talked about. So what Kate, what I'm hearing Kate talking about is the education part and maybe also kind of understanding and education. So understand what, what are the drivers, what are the issues, understand and make sure, and educate ourselves, which I still need more education on, on this topic. But I think there's two other things for me. One is that I'd like, I hope we get to tonight and then the next is probably not for tonight. But the next is, I actually want to start doing something. You know, it's November 5th and so we're already a few months into the school year. And I know we've been doing some education and we're doing some training, but I think we actually have to start coming up with what are some actions and things that we can actually start having an impact? It might not be the answer, the only answer. It might only be partially answered or partially impacting. But I want to start doing something. And if, if, I can't go much longer without some activity and action. So I'd like to see that. And then, and I think we had some good ideas, so I don't want to lose those or be slow on. If we have a few good ideas, let's start doing those and then we can always build on them. But if we have something that's good and might work and have an impact, I'd like to do that. And then the last piece is kind of following from that is how do you implement the things that we want to do? So, but you can't do that until you do the second step, which, so I don't expect that we'd get to the implementation phase necessarily. But I hope we can commit to at least a couple tangible, real things that we think could have impact tonight. That's what I would.
Absolutely. And that is the goal indeed. Absolutely. Others want to weigh in? What do you feel ready to do next?
Certainly, this is Tim. I certainly am extremely interested in doing something to, to try to attract more diversity into our faculty and administrative team. And I'd like to be able to do it in a way that, that is sustainable, that somehow it, we establish some sort of a pipeline or something that, that allows this to go on for several years. So that maybe after in X number of years, people look back and say, geez, we actually, we actually have quite a bit of diversity now relative to where we were in 2020 on our faculty and, and with our administrative team. I would really, I really think that that's, from my vantage point, that would be really a good thing to work on.
I'll go next. This is Jamie. I'm with Tim and Eric. I would like us to see us do have an action step and an action plan going forward. And I'd love to not only see diversity in the staff, but diversity in the talent and then in the student body. But I don't know how to get there. I mean, yes, we have a policy for recruitment, but it's actually doing the recruitment and putting together a positive environment for women to teach in and learn in. And a talent in which that's positive to welcome them. So I just, I don't know what action steps we'd take to do that, but that's what my next step is, that's what I want as a next step.
I'll do a caveat on that. I mean, I kind of feel like we're a little bit stuck, to be honest with you. I feel like nobody really knows what to do next. I'm with Tim as far as wanting to create that environment, but also have something more sustainable. We were talking a couple of meetings ago in regards to a pilot. were talking a couple of meetings ago in regards to a pilot type structure along with Learn, which I think would be really fantastic. But I guess it's just actually what to do next. I don't, I don't really know how to make those steps in order to get to the action part. So I guess that's what I'm looking for. Some, some help there. I think that's one of the bigger items. I think that every day, I think that teachers in our environment, we can implement different things on a smaller level, but I think they'll be impactful. I talked about that when we last met, whether or not it's books, whether or not it's just the environment implementing different faces and cultures that are different than what we have. Those are like little things. But I'm looking for the next step, I guess, too. And we're ready to to make it. We just don't really know how to do it, I guess. That's all I have.
Awesome. So the good news is that that's actually what we plan to do tonight. So that's the good news. Before we leave, I do want to, and as I said, through the breakout groups, you'll have an opportunity to begin to hone in on probably one or two specific priorities that you'll be able to, you know, begin to affect tangible next steps to. There's a litmus test that I'll ask you to sort of think about as you approach each possibility. You know, do we, can we do this today? What are the things that stand in our way? You know, what do we need in order to make this happen? And, you know, and and so those things, right, will help to determine which are the priority areas, particularly as it relates to, you know, what you can do sooner, rather than later. And then thinking about some of the longer term opportunities for you. The caveat that I will give is that sometimes, and probably some of why you might feel stuck, is that we are also operating within a scenario that's operating outside of our walls, that has rendered our society in the situation that it is in. And as a result, some of the things that we might ordinarily say, well, yes, we'll introduce, I don't know, a new curriculum, or we'll introduce a particular new program, are challenged by the fact that we are in the midst of COVID-19. And so I do want to make sure that we don't forget, it's hard to forget it, right? But that we don't, you know, beat ourselves up around some of the things that in what we might consider to be the normal course of business, we would absolutely be able to put in place. So that does not mean that there's not work that can be done. It just means we have to shift a little bit in our thinking, because we're not necessarily going to be able to execute the things in the way that we might think would demonstrate success. So just to sort of level set in that way. But, you know, do not despair, because there certainly are things that can be done. So I do want to inspire you a bit this evening as we prepare to think about those things that we will be able to put into place that will be sustainable. And I want you to watch this TED Talk, which is about 18 minutes. And it's entitled The Danger of a Single Story. Chimamanda Adichie is a Nigerian writer. Some of you may be familiar with her. This TED Talk, I think, is what propelled her in many instances into sort of a, you know, an awareness where many had not been familiar with her. But she tells a story without giving too much away, that I think for this particular district is really appropriate. And I hope that it will inspire you as we move into the next phase, once we've watched the TED Talk, to think about what tangibly we can do to operate outside of a single story. So I am going to just simply switch out of the screen sharing. Or actually, it might work. Let me see if it works. If not, then I'll just pop out. I have it on a separate tab. I'm impressed. Can everyone see and hear? Hear, right? Okay. Hold on one second. Share the computer sound. Okay. We'll do it this way. You can see it full screen.
I'm a storyteller. And I would like to tell you a few personal stories about what I like to call the danger of the single story. I grew up on a university campus in eastern Nigeria. My mother says that I started reading at the age of two, although I think four is probably close to the truth. So I was an early reader. And what I read were British and American children's books. I was also an early writer. And when I began to write at about the age of seven, stories in pencil with crayon illustrations that my poor mother was obligated to read, I wrote exactly the kinds of stories I was reading. All my characters were white and blue eyed. They played in the snow. They ate apples. And they talked a lot about the weather, how lovely it was that the sun had come out. Now, this despite the fact that I lived in Nigeria, had never been outside Nigeria. We didn't have snow. We ate mangoes. And we never talked about the weather because there was no need to. My characters also drank a lot of ginger beer, because the characters in the British books I read drank ginger beer. Never mind that I had no idea what ginger beer was. And for many years afterwards, I would have a desperate desire to taste ginger beer. But that is another story. What this demonstrates, I think, is how impressionable and vulnerable we are in the face of a story, particularly as children. Because all I had read were books in which characters were foreign, I had become convinced that books, by their very nature, had to have foreigners in them, and had to be about things with which I could not personally identify. Now, things changed when I discovered African books. There weren't many of them available, and they weren't quite as easy to find as the foreign books. But because of writers like Chinua Achebe and Kamara Lai, I went through a mental shift in my perception of literature. I realized that people like me, girls with skin the color of chocolate, whose kinky hair could not form ponytails, could also exist in literature. I started to write about things I recognized. Now, I loved those American and British books I read. They stirred my imagination. They opened up new worlds for me. Once was that I did not know that people like me could exist in literature. So what the discovery of African writers did for me was this, it saved me from having a single story of what books are. I come from a conventional, middle-class Nigerian family. My father was a professor. My mother was an administrator. And so we had, as was the norm, live-in domestic help who would often come from nearby rural villages. So the year I turned eight, we got a new houseboy. His name was Fide. The only thing my mother told us about him was that his family was very poor. My mother sent yams and rice and old clothes to his family. And when I didn't finish my dinner, my mother would say, finish your food. Don't you know people like Fide's family have nothing? So I felt enormous pity for Fide's family. Then one Saturday, we went to his village to visit. And his mother showed us a beautifully patterned basket made of dyed raffia that his brother had made. I was startled. It had not occurred to me that anybody in his family could actually make something. All I had heard about them was how poor they were, so that it had become impossible for me to see them as anything else but poor. Their poverty was my single story of them. Years later, I thought about this when I left Nigeria to go to university in the United States. I was 19. My American roommate was shocked by me. She asked where I had learned to speak English so well, and was confused when I said that Nigeria happened to have English as its official language. She asked if she could listen to what she called my tribal music, and was consequently very disappointed when I produced my tape of Mariah Carey. She assumed that I did not know how to use a stove. What struck me was this, she had felt sorry for me even before she saw me. Her default position toward me as an African was a kind of patronizing, well-meaning pity. My roommate had a single story of Africa, a single story of catastrophe. In this single story, there was no possibility of Africans being similar to her in any way, no possibility of feelings more complex than pity, no possibility of a connection as human equals. I must say that before I went to the US, I didn't consciously identify as African. But in the US, whenever Africa came up, people turned to me, never mind that I knew nothing about places like Namibia. But I did come to embrace this new identity. And in many ways, I think of myself now as African, although I still get quite irritable when Africa is referred to as a country, the most recent example being my otherwise wonderful flight from Lagos two days ago, in which there was an announcement on the Virgin Flight about the charity work in India, Africa, and other countries. So after I had spent some years in the US as an African, I began to understand my roommate's response to me. If I had not grown up in Nigeria, and if all I knew about Africa were from popular images, I too would think that Africa was a place of beautiful landscapes, beautiful animals, and incomprehensible people fighting senseless wars, dying of poverty and AIDS, unable to speak for themselves, and waiting to be saved by a kind, white foreigner. I would see Africans in the same way that I, as a child, had seen Fide's family. This single story of Africa ultimately comes, I think, from Western literature. Now, here's a quote from the writing of a London merchant called John Locke, who sailed to West Africa in 1561 and kept a fascinating account of his voyage. After referring to the black Africans as beasts who have no houses, he writes, "They are also people without heads, having their mouths and eyes in their dresses." Now, I've laughed every time I've read this, and one must admire the imagination of John Locke. But what is important about his writing is that it represents the beginning of a tradition of telling African stories in the West, a tradition of Sub-Saharan Africa as a place of negatives, of difference, of darkness, of people who, in the words of the wonderful poet Rudyard Kipling, are half devil, half child. And so I began to realize that my American roommate must have throughout her life seen and heard different versions of this single story, as had a professor who once told me that my novel was not authentically African. Now, I was quite willing to contend that there were a number of things wrong with the novel, that it had failed in a number of places. But I had not quite imagined that it had failed at achieving something called African authenticity. In fact, I did not know what African authenticity was. The professor told me that my characters were too much like him, an educated and middle-class man. My characters drove cars. They were not starving. Therefore, they were not authentically African. But I must quickly add that I too am just as guilty on the question of the single story. A few years ago, I visited Mexico from the US. The political climate in the US at the time was tense, and there were debates going on about immigration. And as often happens in America, immigration became synonymous with Mexicans. There were endless stories of Mexicans as people who were fleecing the healthcare system, sneaking across the border, being arrested at the border, that sort of thing. I remember walking around on my first day in Guadalajara, watching the people going to walk, rolling up to tears in the marketplace, smoking, laughing. I remember first feeling slight surprise, and then I was overwhelmed with shame. I realized that I had been so immersed in the media coverage of Mexicans, that they had become one thing in my mind, the abject immigrant. I had bought into the single story of Mexicans, and I could not have been more ashamed of myself. So that is how to create a single story. Show a people as one thing, as only one thing, over and over again. And that is what they become. It is impossible to talk about the single story without talking about power. There is a word, an ibo word, that I think about whenever I think about the power structures of the world, and it is Nkali. It's a noun that loosely translates to to be greater than another. Like our economic and political worlds, stories too are defined by the principle of Nkali. How they are told, who tells them, when they are told, how many stories are told, are really dependent on power. Power is the ability not just to tell the story of another person, but to make it the definitive story of that person. The Palestinian poet Murid Baghouti writes that if you want to dispossess a people, the simplest way to do it is to tell their story and to start with secondly. Start the story with the arrows of the Native Americans and not with the arrival of the British, and you have an entirely different story. Start the story with the failure of the African state, and not with the colonial creation of the African state, and you have an entirely different story. I recently spoke at a university where a student told me that it was such a shame that Nigerian men were physical abusers like the father character in my novel. I told him that I had just read a novel called American Psycho. And that it was such a shame that young Americans were serial murderers. Now, obviously, I said this in a fit of mild irritation, but it would never have occurred to me to think that just because I had read a novel in which a character was a serial killer, that he was somehow representative of all Americans. And now, this is not because I am a better person than that student, but because of America's cultural and economic power, I had many stories of America. I had read Thailand, Updike, and Steinbeck, and Gateskill. I did not have a single story of America. When I learned some years ago that writers were expected to have had really unhappy childhoods to be successful, I began to think about how I could invent horrible things my parents had done to me. But the truth is that I had a very happy childhood, full of laughter and love, in a very close-knit family. But I also had grandfathers who died in refugee camps. My cousin Polly died because he could not get adequate healthcare. One of my closest friends, Okuloma, died in a plane crash because her fire trucks did not have water. I grew up under repressive military governments that devalued education so that sometimes my parents were not paid their salaries. And so as a child, I saw jam disappear from the breakfast table, then margarine disappeared, then bread became too expensive, then milk became rationed. And most of all, a kind of normalized political fear invaded our lives. All of these stories make me who I am. But to insist on only these negative stories is to flatten my experience and to overlook the many other stories that formed me. The single story creates stereotypes. And the problem with stereotypes is not that they are untrue, but that they are incomplete. They make one story become the only story. Of course, Africa is a continent full of catastrophes, the immense ones such as the horrific rapes in Congo, and depressing ones such as the fact that 5,000 people apply for one job vacancy in Nigeria. But there are other stories that are not about catastrophe. And it's very important, it is just as important to talk about them. I've always felt that it is impossible to engage properly with a place or a person without engaging with all of the stories of that place and that person. The consequence of the single story is this, it robs people of dignity. It makes our recognition of our equal humanity difficult. It emphasizes how we are different, rather than how we are similar. So what if before my Mexican trip, I had followed the immigration debate from both sides, the US and the Mexican? What if my mother had told us that Fide's family was poor and had walking? What if we had an African television network that broadcast diverse African stories all over the world, what the Nigerian writer Chinua Achebe calls a balance of stories? What the Nigerian writer Chinua Achebe calls "a balance of stories"? What if my roommate knew about my Nigerian publisher, Mukta Bakare, a remarkable man who left his job in a bank to follow his dream and start a publishing house? Now, the conventional wisdom was that Nigerians don't read literature. He disagreed. He felt that people who could read would read if you made literature affordable and available to them. Shortly after he published my first novel, I went to a TV station in Lagos to do an interview and a woman who walked there as a messenger came up to me and said, "I really liked your novel. I didn't like the ending. Now you must write a sequel and this is what will happen." And she went on to tell me what to write in the sequel. Now, I was not only charmed, I was very moved. Here was a woman, part of the ordinary masses of Nigerians who are not supposed to be readers. She had not only read the book, but she had taken ownership of it and felt justified in telling me what to write in the sequel. Now, what if my roommate knew about my friend, Fumi Yonda, a fearless woman who hosts a TV show in Lagos and is determined to tell the stories that we prefer to forget? What if my roommate knew about the heart procedure that was performed in the Lagos hospital last week? What if my roommate knew about contemporary Nigerian music, talented people singing in English and pidgin and ibo and yeruba and ijo, mixing influences from Jay-Z to Fela to Bob Marley to their grandfathers? What if my roommate knew about the female lawyer who recently went to court in Nigeria to challenge a ridiculous law that required women to get their husband's consent before renewing their passports? What if my roommate knew about Nollywood, full of innovative people making films despite great technical odds? Films so popular that they really are the best example of Nigerians consuming what they produce? What if my roommate knew about my wonderfully ambitious hair braider, who has just started her own business selling hair extensions? Or about the millions of other Nigerians who start businesses and sometimes fail, but continue to nurse ambition? Every time I am home, I am confronted with the usual sources of irritation for most Nigerians, our failed infrastructure, our failed government, but also by the incredible resilience of people who thrive despite the government rather than because of it. I teach writing workshops in Lagos every summer and it is amazing to me how many people apply, how many people are eager to write, to tell stories. My Nigerian publisher and I have just started a nonprofit called Farafina Trust and we have big dreams of building libraries and refurbishing libraries that already exist and providing books for state schools that don't have anything in their libraries and also of organizing lots and lots of workshops and reading and writing for all the people who are eager to tell our many stories. Stories matter. Many stories matter. Stories have been used to dispossess and to malign, but stories can also be used to empower and to humanize. Stories can break the dignity of a people, but stories can also repair that broken dignity. The American writer Alice Walker wrote this about her southern relatives who had moved to the north and she introduced them to a book about the southern life that they had left behind. "They sat around reading the book themselves, listening to me read the book, and the kind of paradise was regained." I would like to end with this thought, that when we reject the single story, when we realize that there is never a single story about any place, we regain a kind of paradise. Thank you.
All right. I love that story because it causes us to think about all of the single stories that we have believed all of our lives. And now the work that you all essentially have ahead of you is the opportunity to, in fact, dismantle the single story as it relates to East Line. What single story can you disrupt in East Line by your work? What single stories do you believe about East Line? What do you know? What's the story you have of your town, your district?
Do we want to change?
You want to change. Now that's a good single story to have. That's a good one, right? But what would you have believed prior to that, prior to the desire to change? What would you have believed that could potentially even stand in your way? I remember coming in and you all saying, even in those documents, "But we're all white. How can we do it?", right? Don't we have to disrupt that single story? And what that means potentially as it stands as a barrier to the change that you want to see, right?
Well, right, like for me, like I keep thinking of the exposure part because coming from an area that has been so diverse and I've had that in my life, it doesn't, it's not here, like it's far and few between, right? So, you know, I have, we have to, if you're looking for culture, if you're looking for diversity, if you're looking for differences, you have to leave town, you have to go outside of our district. And I recognized that, I didn't recognize it until my father came into town of really how indifferent things were or how things were looked at. And I remember, you know, feeling that and knowing it and wanting to, you know, prompt change. So, you know, you always ask yourself like, what are the things that I can do singly or to model, right? And I feel like that's just not enough, like there's not enough of maybe people like me or people that want that. I don't, I don't know.
Well, I'll add to that two canes. I feel like, you know, in this town, we've, there's been an element of conditioning. You know, we have been conditioned, not necessarily our fault, but just because of our surrounding, a predominantly white town, we've been conditioned to think and, or not think a certain way. You know, we're not to branch out, not to realize that, you know, there's a lot of diversity that is out there, you know, in the world and is nearby us. But we kind of, you know, we're in our own little cocoon here in many ways. It's our own single story. So how do we, like you said, how do we disrupt that to allow the focus to be on a broader spectrum?
Right.
Uh, this is Jill. I have a question. How do you stop, well, let me preface it with, when I first moved to this town, someone told me the nickname of the town was White Town and I was appalled. Because I was just appalled because where I'd grown up and gone to school, it was pretty much half and half. And the only culture, only culture, only other culture there was African-American. So I guess what I want to say, how do we change that or how? How do we bring diversity in if we don't have the individual, if we don't have the individuals? We don't have the live beings? Like we can talk, but I guess I may make myself clear?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just like, we can do whatever we want, but if we don't experience in real life a diverse culture or make those, open the opportunities up for our students, what are we really doing? I mean, that's what I think. That's my whole, that's my whole concern. We can make all the changes we want, but unless there, we actually go out, I'm going to use the town New London or go down to Bridgeport or go to a large city, what good is it going to do? I know that, I don't know, just trying to figure out what's the right thing to do. So it's easy to verbalize, but when you're in the trenches, it's much different.
Yeah. Yep, Kate, go ahead.
Are you finished, Jill? I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, 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 that's okay.
Yeah, I didn't really have a clear concise thought. I was more speaking from the heart.
No, no, no. Okay. So I think it's disrupting the status quo because it's what we have and it's who we are. And we do have some diversity. The diversity is African-American, Black, it's Hispanic, Latinx, it's Asian, we have a lot of Chinese and we have a lot of Indian. But beyond that, we don't, and then the numbers, I think Jeff, you had said at one point, 10% maybe, if I'm remembering correctly.
And try to represent it all in.
Right, right. And even like the town of East Line, embarrassingly enough, well, previously was when the prison had a larger population, that's where we got most of our racial diversity. So, and that, you know, to me, that's, it's embarrassing. But, you know, it's the status quo, so it's disrupting to some extent the status quo. And it was when, was it Smotis, Paul Smotis was the superintendent of schools? I don't know how many years back that was. Was that two superintendents ago? Jeff, I don't remember. But I had my friend Tariko Satterfield told the story at a convention or meeting where he was working and he's a brilliant, like forty-year-old. And he's talked about working late one night and then got arrested and was held at gunpoint, basically. So when we're talking about bringing people of color into our schools, we have to just do more than just say like, we're going to recruit, you know, we need to protect and support. And then the next thing I think is providing housing and resources for our people. And also, you know, the next step of course is a living wage, not a minimum wage, and healthcare so that people can have the resources that they need to be able to live. And then transportation, of course, is the next thing because in our town, transportation is an issue. So it's really, you know, Joelle, it's just so multifaceted what we're looking at as far as how we can do it. And I think the simplest steps are integration of curriculum, bringing in, you know, whether it's art or history or music, always bringing in people's, you know, stellar leaders in whatever, you know, science or whatever it is, is the subject area, but bringing it across the curriculum so that we can all be aware of who our geniuses are regardless of race or religion or whatever. And I'll stop there.
So, one of the things I was going to say, and I think that, you know, as you all are articulating, you know, some of the things that you might feel as if they stand in your way, right? And one of the things that I shared in talking with Tim and Jeff in preparation for today is I'm encouraged that in spite of those things, you want to go forward. Now, that may seem small to you, but one could argue, what is your motivation if you don't have diversity in your town, right? But yet you still have persisted and said, this is important enough for us, right? One of the examples that I always use is that I teach at UConn School of Business. One of the things we know about the School of Business is it's probably one of the lowest acceptance rates for students of color. There are almost, you know, to a student, white primarily male and then followed by white female students in the School of Business. In the four years that I've taught my course, I can count on one hand the students of color who've been in my class. I teach managing a diverse workforce. Why is it still really important to me? Because I recognize that when I ask them, they often say that I'm the first Black faculty member that they have had. This is senior year, before they go off into corporate America or wherever they choose entrepreneurship or what have you. It is an opportunity for them to understand and to dispel some of the myths, to debunk some of the stereotypes that they probably, because of the way we even embrace bias.
Joelle, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm astounded, astounded that, I mean, I'm thinking about my experience. I probably had one every year where I went to school that students at UConn can go through four years and you are the first person of color. I'm astounded. I just, I had to say that. I was just like, when you were, I apologize for interrupting you, but I'm astounded. And like, it's almost like if, I don't know, I just, I can't believe it in this day and age.
Yeah, I mean, well, you know, I mean, honestly, if we were to break it down and look at faculty, Black faculty, and I'm not, I'm not tenured faculty, right? So if we were, you know, I'm an adjunct. But if you were to look at tenured PhD holders, I mean, Black faculty make up probably about 2% or 3% in the US. So, you know, save the fact that in business, they allow for individuals who don't have a terminal degree to teach. They would not have had one at all. My point though in making, in making that is the reality for me as a Black faculty member, is that these students, albeit how long it took for them to have the experience, have now had it. And they go off into the business world or they're, and they recognize like, hmm, in spite of everything I've been taught or learned or not shown or not exposed to, wow, look at that, a Black woman can be a professor. And hopefully, oh, by the way, I learned something, right? And so the expectation for me is that I have, even if it's just by one person doing something, have changed the dynamic that they probably went into at minimum that class, but potentially college believing, right? If you've never had a person of color as your teacher, mentally you might not believe, in fact, that they could be your teacher. Now, that sounds really extreme, but think about the, the research studies that have been done about, you know, when you ask a young children, you know, what does a doctor look like? And it's always a male. Or what does an engineer look like? And it's always a male. Do you think it's far-fetched for students to not believe that in fact, people of color could even teach them something? For me, that's the takeaway that to the point about, you know, not sure if one person can do something. I very much feel like in the lives of the students that I've taught, I have had impact because perhaps now they think differently in a way that they may not have even thought about before, like, wow, I've never had, they had to really think about this Black woman is standing in front of me. I've never had a Black person teach me before. So I think the opportunity for you all, and yes, it does feel super big, right? And you can't be responsible for the town and everything that happens as a result of it. What you can do, right? So just then as an example, I don't want to put a specific example in your, in your, in your ears or in your brain, but I've heard you all talk about what it would mean to recruit perhaps a cohort of students, of teachers, one or two, two or three perhaps, to come and be in residence within your district. Now certainly, that might mean partnering with a Realtor in town to ensure that when they come, that they are greeted by someone who can show them around and that they are not disproportionately, you know, dismissed and sent off to go live somewhere else, right? So sure, you can partner with those folks, but what you can tangibly do is you've got headcount, right? You've got potentially dollars and if you don't, there's the possibility perhaps to raise the dollars to support, you know, as a longer-term sustainable, maybe there's an inclusion fund that you launch that allows you to have additional resources towards really intentionally creating exposure that you know is valuable for your students. All the research tells us that being in classrooms with people who are different and bring different perspectives, you know, give strength and critical thinking skills and all these kinds of things, right? So I say all of that to say that there are in fact, things that you can do that tangibly you can identify and so I'm giving that tangibly you can identify, and so I'm giving away, I'm, I'm doing the work that you all should be doing over this time, so I'm gonna put you all into these groups so you can start thinking about it. But I just want you to be confident about the fact that you can actually begin to meet, to make a change, you can. You know, by changing that single story, that, changing that status quo, dismantling that notion of white town, right? Maybe that's what your history has been, but that does not mean that that's who you have to always be. And simply in investing in the next generation to help them to think differently about the importance of inclusion is a major step to doing so. So, steps on your diversity, equity and inclusion journey, awareness. That's a lot of what you're beginning to do, right? Your reading, we had our session, we talked about race, we learned some things. You all then took it a step further, had conversations, several of you have been reading and been more intentional and learning being more observant and mindful about things that now you see perhaps differently than you saw before. The inquiry part, so now how do we start to ask these questions? You're already doing it, right? What do our demographics look like today, right? Within our student body, within our faculty, within our administration. What are, what are some of the, the opportunities that we might have in that area? Then setting forth a plan. So, okay, for example, we look at our representation within science teaching faculty, let's say for the sake of argument. And you zero in there, right? And you, and you put forth a plan that says that you'd like to increase the representation of people of color amongst your science faculty by fifty percent by twenty twenty-three, right? Gives you some time to develop a program, a strategy perhaps, to bring that cohort that you know might be the answer to helping teachers potentially to stay and feel that they are invested and connected, right? And then, you know, taking the action to do so. So those are the steps that you're taking. You all are in awareness right now. The other thing that I really wanna impress upon you is that this is not a sprint. This is a marathon. You did not become who you are as a district overnight, nor will you become different overnight. And so there are, in fact, going to have to be deliberate steps that you take. I found this when I was doing some research about, how might I suggest to you, here's what an action plan for racial equity looks like in a district. This is New Paltz, upstate New York, probably a bit more culturally and racially diverse than you are, didn't do the digging to find out. But what they did was they really set forth, now look at the timeframe, I just wanna, if you can see, November twenty sixteen to June of twenty twenty-one. Now, what would be interesting, right, is to call these folks and say, hey, you know, you set forth this five-year plan. And there are some standards that they set, as you can see, around program, around teacher skill, around learning environment, around leadership. And then they articulated what success would look like, what it looks like when we will have achieved the standard, right? And I would imagine that in the course of the five years, because they're getting really close to the end of their strategic plan, that they probably have had some twists and turns along the way. Few things have happened externally, I'm sure, that have changed their impact, potentially their ability to move forward. Maybe there have been some budgetary changes, I don't know, I'm making these things up. But realistically, they looked at five years. I want you all to not beat yourselves up for not having changed something in five weeks. Okay? So let, let's be real about that. So, just to think about awareness, and I know we're gonna run out of time, but I really want you, so maybe we won't break up, maybe we'll just talk about this. Because I really want us to think about, and, and the cohort teacher idea might be a really good one. I mean, that's just me extrapolating based upon what I've heard from your conversations and what I've read. And then curriculum might be another kind of low-hanging fruit one that you might wanna address. And then I think that, you know, for those of you who really are looking at the broader town, right? And how that impacts the district, you know, perhaps there's a way to talk with your town council or the requisite commission to think about, what are they doing around racial equity? Maybe they too should think about establishing a task force that of course would have education as an intersection point. But that for those of you who are thinking about, right, Kate, the housing and some of the other broader issues, that in fact, that's sort of some of their responsibility to help support you as a school district and being able to create the change that you want to see, right? So, let's think about awareness, just for two seconds, I'm gonna take you through each of the steps, just to give you some context around what perhaps it could look like. Awareness, a look in the mirror, the self-discovery, that is squarely where you are right now, right? You talk about, there's, there's training already in existence for staff. You all have engaged in our session last week, you know, this is a little bit more of a working session, but there's still education, there's learning taking place. There can be materials that are introduced. You know, you can think about, as you think about your game plan for how you want to tackle this, you know, think about it in multiple phases. Your phase one perhaps is focused on step one, awareness. Maybe your entire focus for the, the remainder of this academic year is raising awareness. You know, delivering programming, delivering content, materials and information as we struggle with being in COVID nineteen, that folks can take in and embrace, no matter where they sit, right? That you can impact the students who are in school in a tangible way, no matter where, no matter where they sit. Maybe that's something to think about. The piece in awareness that I think is critically important and, and in New Paltz's racial equity journey, and I can send you the link, I think I might have put it in the end of this, they have, and, and were intentional about developing a commitment statement. What exactly are we committing to around racial equity or inclusion? What do we mean by that? You know, that's why I spent some time in our first session, really talking about, what is diversity? What are we even talking about? Who do we mean, right? Maybe your diversity is not visibly expressed in race and ethnicity. Perhaps there's diversity in the context of sexual orientation, disability, language, that perhaps you're not aware of, socioeconomic status, right? That's not visible, but nonetheless is there. So when you talk about surveying and the anecdotal feedback that you have from your students, you likely heard some of those things that are a bit invisible, right, to you. But thinking about what this journey means, what are you committed to? What do you as a school board commit to advancing? You know, so that's part of it, I, I gave you an example here. This is from a, a nonprofit, American for the Arts, but they launched their statement on cultural equity. To support a full creative life for all, Americans for the Arts commits to championing policies and practices of cultural equity that empower just, inclusive, equitable nation. Super big and super broad, right? But at least they've articulated what they plan to do. Then you drill down and your plan becomes morphs from there. So beginning to think about what your statement might be, right? So, as you all think about what your next steps can be to really take action, there are a number of pieces, even in this awareness stage, that you can choose to identify as, as a way forward. The inquiry piece, which is the second stage, is some of you asked about this, maybe we should hire someone to help us audit. You know, what is going on here? How do we pull back the layers of the onion? This is really a phase two kind of thing, because in phase one, where you're, you're still learning, you don't even necessarily know all the questions you wanna ask. If you jump straight to the inquiry phase first, right? So, an assessment, right? Perhaps it's a survey, perhaps it's focus groups. Perhaps there is other data, whether it be policies, handbooks, materials from the curriculum, that help you to identify what opportunities there might be, but also what strengths exist, right? Who are the, the teachers who are really going above and beyond to ensure inclusion in their curriculum, right? Things of that nature. So some of the questions, what are the demographics of the staff, the students, right? You all know that. How do we attract talent? What's our practice, our process for, for recruiting? When was the last time that we collected feedback on this? You know, you, some of you probably have been around long enough to remember the last time there was a, a candidate of color who applied for a role, right? You might be able to even speak to that. Did you ask that candidate what their feedback was, perhaps? You know, did they, you know, was there a selection or their, their decision not to come? What, what was the basis upon that? What are our blind spots, right? You all want to create change, what are some things you might not see? Are there folks out there who aren't on the same page as this whole board? Are there folks on the board who may not be at the same point, right? We all have entered into this dialogue from different perspectives. Plan, your third step on your journey. So, once you've begun some awareness, identified and made a commitment, began to do some of that due diligence and inquiry and, and learning and understanding sort of where you are, now it's time to put the plan in place. So identifying a core team or individual who's responsible, who is going to ensure that you carry through the, the steps that you are looking to integrate as far as your plan. Your inquiry is gonna tell you what some of the gaps are that you could potentially address, right? I mean, some of them you might know now, you, you know what your demographics look like of your faculty. And so, it, it, it probably behooves you to think about how you might be able to attract some faculty and what that might look like, right? And then formalize, so articulate it clearly, tell folks what you're doing, right? You might even take the opportunity now to indicate to your district, the school board has engaged in two full sessions with a D E and I consultant to help us begin to navigate through the issues that plague our nation. I'm making it up, right? Somebody, oh, we're recording it, so you can write that exact thing down and, and a letter to share, right? Communicate, 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 let folks know what you're doing, right? It's not nothing, it's something. You've begun a conversation that was not a part of the status quo in previous administrations. And then the final step is action, moving with intention, one step at a time. You wanna be deliberate and you want to measure the actions that you take. And then you wanna execute with accuracy, right? You wanna be successful, so you don't wanna be jack of all trades and master of none. What can you focus on and identify as an op, as an opportunity for this district to be able to really dig into and move to action? And then perhaps build it into the performance expectations. How do you hold, whether it be the administration or the board accountable for this plan that you've set forth around D E I? How do you make sure that those things that you've set forth will actually take place? So, you know, when we go back to, and we talked about some of this, I think, last time, but this is just some of the work that you all have already been doing in terms of awareness, is really thinking about what it is that you are getting ready to do before you begin. How are you feeling? What are your assumptions? What will happen if you don't do this work and what will happen if you don't? So just some things as you go back to step one to think about. So this was supposed to be our action planning time, and of course, we have like, no minutes left, like, negative, we have four minutes left, but not enough for you all to spend in action planning. But perhaps this is something that you all can do as a group, you know, without me in between the next time, or whatever the case may be, to really answer these questions. Where are we on our journey? So we just thought about that path, right, of four steps. My personal opinion is that you're at one, right? Where do you wanna be, right? I heard loud and clear this evening, we wanna move to action, so you wanna be at four. What resources or information do you need in order to continue on your journey? Well, depending upon what you decide on as your priorities, that may vary, right? What will you need to support it? And then, most importantly, what is standing in your way? What is preventing you from doing this work? I feel an incredible sense of energy amongst this board. As I said earlier, you don't have to be doing this, really, at the end of the day, right? What you all have said, you know, well, we're, you know, we're ninety percent white, right? No one in the community is saying to us, or maybe some are, no one is, there's not a loud rallying cry, hey, Board of Ed, get it together, right? You all have taken on this mantle to do this good work, and it is good. And so I really am encouraged by the energy around wanting to move to action and not allowing time to pass such that you do feel like you're stagnant, right? But I do see some really clear things that you have done and can be doing to articulate your movement, your momentum. And so this, these four questions are things that you would have gone into the breakout, but I think perhaps you might be able to engage yourselves as you think about where you want to be and where you are now, and what you need to get to where you want to be. And I think that, you know, again, that all has to do with, as you look at the document that you put together and some of the ideas that rose to the top, what are one or two things that you really can take tangible steps to accomplish before the end of this school year? And let it be one or two things, not ten. You're not gonna be at step four. You might still be in one, because you've got people to bring along with you. You've got staff, you've got students, you've got other administrators, right? Perhaps you have a, a call out to the town to say, hey, you know, we're in this and we feel like there's a place for you in it too, we think you all should, right? So there's folks you have to bring along, so I think you're in one, and it's okay to be at step one for the remainder of this academic year. But when you put forth the deliberate steps and communicate clearly, hey, folks, this is what we're doing, and we want you to know. And if there are any of you that want to help share resources, we welcome you to join us on this journey. I think that's something, you know, you tell me, but I think that's something.
Joelle, can I ask you a question? So, the one thing that I'm missing is the education component. How do we teach, not just racial diversion, diversity, but cultural diversity? Because while we're also on the subject of race, cultural divis- diversity plays a huge role in that also. Because it's not just people of color, it's Latinos, it's Asians, it's Indians. There is bias with not only race, but there's bias with culture. I just, how do we educate each other about the bias around culture and our students, our staff and the community?
Yeah, absolutely. So I, what I, I pulled that slide deck down, because I wanted to share with you, when I do an intro to D and I workshop, typically, I'm just gonna pull up this slide. This is how I define diversity, it's much broader than race, which is why I was saying before, I mean, race is probably one of the most visible dimensions of diversity, but realistically, there are likely other components that you all, you know, may not even be aware of or at play, you know, in terms of how you've even received the feedback from your students. They will tell you, you know, what's going on, so just wanna show you this. So, when I define diversity, I define diversity broadly in the context of these various dimensions. And what you see in front of you is an iceberg. And what we know about icebergs, just very quickly, is that we can only see about ten percent of them above the surface of the water. What we also know is that if ships captains and naval or military vessel navigators do not have tools and instruments that they need to navigate through, you know, colder waters, if they were to simply base their, their navigation on what they saw as it relates to an iceberg, they could potentially put the ship in danger. Very similarly, think about us as people. We attempt to make assessments about people based upon what we can see on the surface, which is not always accurate, right? We perhaps can tell from someone's skin color, maybe we can determine their gender, perhaps we can determine their age, but even these aren't a hundred percent right. However, these are the ways that we put people into boxes. This is how we determine where people fit, right? But look at the other ninety percent, if you will, that's under the surface of the water. All kinds of things that can trip us up, create barriers and prevent us from really seeing the All kinds of things that can trip us up, create barriers and prevent us from really seeing the inclusion that we want to see. Sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, military experience, religion, geography, values, beliefs, et cetera, right? Education, all of those things can prevent us from really imagining or experiencing the inclusion that we seek. So when I think about the learning component, there's a very real, you know, sort of what is diversity, equity and inclusion? And then there are certainly, you know, as as people have been talking a lot about recently, anti-racism and all these other components that are pieces of um, diversity, equity and inclusion. I think it's really important from an awareness perspective to have a a sort of an uh basic foundational understanding of what we mean by diversity and inclusion. So that's where I always begin in terms of education. And then you can go multiple other ways from there, bias, microaggressions, looking at anti-racism specifically. Um, there's so many different components that sort of fit into the the broader term of diversity education. So that's all a part of the awareness piece. But I just really wanted to encourage you all because I feel like you think for some reason that what you've begun to discuss and begun to uncover is not enough. Um, and that perhaps you all are not good enough or the right people to do this work, and I would tell you different. Um, but it's about taking deliberate steps forward, not one big chunk all at the same time. Kate?
Well, um, I think that we've got, you know, I I'm encouraged by your statements and I'm encouraged by what you perceive as our energy and our enthusiasm, but it is breaking the status quo and you know, we are, we are, yeah, yeah, I know, so I'm just a little bit like, oh, my gosh, how do we do this? Because we are a team of ten and I think that we're all passionate and committed, but I think that the status quo again has served the community for a long period of time and then trying to make a shift from that. You know, like even even going down Boston Post Road, there was a sign up and somebody was saying, if my kid said that in school, it was a derogatory comment against um, Joe Biden, to be specific. And a parent was saying, if if my kid made a comment like how that sign is posted on Boston Post Road, they would end up in, you know, detention or get some. So we just have some real struggle and I, you know, and it's obvious the way our country is right now.
Yeah.
I I just, yeah, I just have to stop there, but that it it's just so big.
It's ve- it is very real and very big. Candace?
So.
It is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can just jump in here for a second. Um, so I think I really believe that the one thing that we can do is take some very specific action to enhance our ability to attract and build diversity into our teaching staff and faculty. I think I, there's a lot of things we can do. I think we we have this opportunity through Learn, okay, to actually engage and what's going to require, it's going to require, it's going to require us to come up with funding to help to help pay for stipends, to have uh diverse uh faculty uh come in uh to the, into the district. And I think to me, to me, it it feels like that's one thing that we can, one thing, we can do other things, but that's one thing that is, it's like it's, it's there for the, for the picking. Uh, and it's just because it's, it's, it's not because of us. It's just that we're aware of of an opportunity that we can take advantage of. And and I really think that would, that would go a long ways in, again, continuing to to en- engage us in in doing something that would would be real um and tangible and measurable. Oh, my gosh. So to me, that that's I, that's the one thing I really am interested in. The other thing I'm very interested in is doing something that have have some expertise come in to the district and look at some aspects of where we're set up such that we get feedback from eyes of diverse experts that had do this for a living and say, these are the, these are the two things that you need to really focus on, okay? And because I just don't know, I think Barry has said this a couple of times to us and and whatever, I just, we are, and Kate has too, really. Um, we just don't know what we don't know. Um, and and we need, we need access to some information or perspectives that will then rattle our cage and say, oh, okay, so that's something that's important. So I, to me, to me, I think that in in terms of, in terms of action, um, I I I really think that those are two things. I'm sure there are other things, but those are two things that we could really get our brains wrapped around and 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 make happen. Well, stop and Candace, you had your hand up, I think.
Can I interrupt with a a quick procedural question, Tim? I made a commitment, I expect this is going to be over six thirty, I made a commitment uh at six thirty for another activity. If I leave, does that disrupt the quorum?
No, um, well, the, I was gonna wonder if we, what we would do is um, Jeff and I could look at our agenda for next Monday and we could actually do, carry, carry this conversation on on in terms of, you know, the 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 actually the awareness inquiry, inquiry, plan and action steps and actually have, do some work around that and see if we can, if as a group, we can, we can identify some, one, one or two things that we can, we think we ought to, we ought to focus on. So I don't know if that's, if that's possible, but that that would be a, would be a good goal.
I have to leave.
Okay, thanks, Barry.
Hi, Barry.
Thanks.
Jeff, um, what do you think?
Before you go, could I just say what I was gonna say?
Sorry.
No way, I don't lose it, actually. Um, so when Kate was speaking, I find myself doing the same thing at times, thinking about all of the moving parts and it feels so big.
Yeah.
So big, like, I don't know where to begin, big. And when she was speaking, I just kept thinking to myself that, and going back months ago when I originally um had asked for our policies to be polled and some other things. And I I just kept thinking that we just, we set the tone, we set the tone. And if we do that together, and I know that we're strong enough, each one of us, we have a, we have a very strong board and at times, you know, we can get at each other a little bit. We have a strong board. And I think that when we start making those movements and being public about it and being very direct, I believe that those things will fall into place. And I know that the bigger is is beyond, and I could go down the list of all of the things that need change because it's big. We can only do what we can do within our district and with our uh input and and our platform, right? That's kind of how I feel about it. And I I concur with Tim in regards to Learn. I think that that's a great starting point. And then working within our district, which we already have started to encourage that welcoming and inclusion for people to feel, for people to not feel how Tariko felt when he was here in our district. That was way before my time. I listened to that story, broke my heart and it made me cry. And it's not what I want our district, our town, our school district to be reflecting. Um, so I just, I think that we can set the tone with that. In addition to, we've already made a commitment to making a public statement in regards to the work that we're doing um and and why. And I think that once we start actually putting those words out and um letting people hear and see the work that we're doing, I think that it will, it will start to just flow even even better.
Well said. Okay, Jeff?
I'll just, I'll just add that, yeah, we, we are committed to um that uh work with Learn and and Crick. Um, so we're just waiting, uh, myself, we've got uh Ledger on board, we've got Waterford on board, we've got New London, obviously, um, and Groton, I think, too, and Norwich. So we're just waiting for the commitment letter. They're supposed, they're supposed to send us a template and uh their mi- the cost might be minimal or less than we think. We're we're applied for some government funding, you know, for it. So otherwise, it's, it's sixty-five thousand approximately for one individual um for next year to bring on a um, almost like an intern student teacher type, but we have the person for the year and they have, they work with a mentor teacher the whole year long. And then we could hire them and we want to hire them at the end of that, so.
Jeff, would it, would this be, would this be um coordinated through through Learn?
It would be, it'd be because what what we need in our region is we need a a rough commitment of fifteen individuals.
Yeah, okay. I was wondering if we could get Kate Erickson to to uh, to uh teleconference in uh at our next board meeting or at a very soon next board meeting and hear, hear her specifics about this program and and how it's set up and all that stuff. I I have heard it, but I think that, I think the the full board would really benefit from hearing this.
Yeah, but even take it one step further, Tim, and get Marlene Magos, who's from Crick.
Yeah.
Program.
Yeah, maybe, 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 yeah, you know, we could get lucky and uh um, we could uh uh see if if some, if they're available or one of them's available for uh next Monday.
I can give her a call tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, but anyway, I I, you know, I I think that, I think that we should also continue this conversation as well because um everybody's got um ideas as also is what what buttons to push and and things to press. Um, and I, and I think that's where the strength of this board comes in by, is by listening to everybody. Anybody, anybody else want to say something or offer any perspective?
Well, I I know Tariko would love to be a part of the conversation. He has told me that he and I are are really good friends. He actually calls me mom, so. And then the other person is Terrell and Curry Avery, and I know Jeff, I have sent you some of her things. And she has a PhD. Um, and she calls her, she's a school psychologist and then she became a pastor. So she calls herself a pastorologist, I think, or something like that, but she's genius. And Tariko is amazing and he does this kind of work in New London. So they they are both very powerful, passionate, and they'll bring you, they'll bring you to the task. They are, they're, they're good, they're really good. You know, if you want to have some eye-opening and comfortable conversations, they will take you there, you know, in a, in a gently bumpy way, so it, you know, it's very effective, both of them.
Hey, that would be a a mechan- yet another mechanism piece to raise our awareness.
Uh, Tariko does this kind of work, I mean, both of them do this kind of work, so they're both, and they're both local, uh, Tariko. They're bu- they're both local, so, yeah.
Good.
Yeah, and they're, and they're both, yeah, doing this kind of work, so.
Any other, any other? I'm going to send the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm going to send you all this PowerPoint. Um, hopefully, there will be some building blocks around the steps to help you kind of move through. But I think, you know, to your point, I think Learn is low-hanging fruit. And, you know, likely, it sounds like there's some other awareness opportunities, you know, that have close ties to your district. That makes sense as well.
That's great.
And then I think as you think long-term and you think about the big giant elephant in the room, you know, recognize that you all should not be doing this work alone and that there is an opportunity, particularly when you begin to communicate, to invite others to the table. Um, whether it be specifically related to the school board or even, you know, in terms of the town or other outside opportunities. So think about that as well.
Okay, Eric? Yeah, I don't want to set off a whole long discussion and debate, but you know, my thinking is that I still think that we as a board need to come together without others and start having a discussion on where we stand, what do we want to do? Uh, I I I'm, I'm interested in learning, I'm interested in awareness. With, that doesn't end just because we have an intermediate-like discussion part, we can still have people come. But I think we're, we're just going all over the map. And we're not, there's no clarity for me on the direction we're heading. Um, there's no clarity for me on how we're even going to get to the different steps. I think we're reaching, well, why don't we try this, why don't we try this? So that's, that's just how I'm feeling right now, and again, others may not agree and that, that's fine. And I don't want to kick off a whole debate, but um, I am, I'm concerned about trying to bring in, talking about, well, what about this person, what about this person, what about us? Like, we haven't talked, we have a lot of smart people here. Um, we have a lot of people who, you know, have, you know, I've had tons of training at work, some here. Um, we've have our own personal experiences. I, I think there's something that we can get by talking to each other first and then see where our gaps are and see where our holes are and see where we really do need the help to come in and and increase our awareness and challenge us and make us uncomfortable, which I'd like to be more uncomfortable of these, I I haven't been uncomfortable yet and I should be. Um, and so I I'd really, I I'd like for us to get together, whether it's a workshop or something. Maybe it's just an hour, it doesn't have to be a half a day meeting or anything like that, but just where we can really just each articulate some of the things that we want to do and start to kind of put them in boxes and put them in themes so that we can start saying, oh, yeah, this could impact this, this could impact that, that could impact that, this is where we're missing. Do we understand this part? Maybe we need to do more, so that, that's where I'd like to go with this next.
Eric, I have a question. Eric, it's Jill, I have a question for you. What is it you you need to feel uncomfortable about? I'm not getting what you're trying to communicate.
So conversations on diversity, equity and inclusion. You know, being a white male and not, I I have questions, I don't know, you know, I'll, I'll get. So challenge me, do I use the, do I use the term African-American or black? I don't know anymore. Um, it was.
I don't think anyone does, to be honest with you. I use them both.
Again, but now some people still use, I hear on CNN and others, people still use African-American. I don't know what's right. Now, I'd love to have that conversation, I, I don't know. Um, but I didn't, we didn't have that come, we, we're not having that.
You work with a black person, you could ask?
Well, I don't think there's one answer, that's the challenge.
I know, I guess is, I tend to go, I would like go to a.
That's the, that's the single, that's the single story, right? The single stories, I go ask one black person and they tell me, I want to be called black. Well, someone else may not want to be, so.
That's true, that's true. I guess is I just talk to everyone. I mean, when I have a question, a racial, a race question that I think I may be wrong or I'm really uh thin on, I ask as many people as I do, I know of color and go, hey, can you like set me straight? Uh, but I tend to be more outgoing and direct, so that can be a fault.
Yeah, so I just opened a whole bunch of can of worms, but that's.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I was like, I don't feel uncomfortable.
Candace, Candace popped up her hand and then Lee wants to say something too.
Yeah, Eric, you didn't, but I really love that you said that because it's bringing, I think, a perspective in that needs to be heard. Um, and and I think that that's also a perspective that um possibly some of our teachers um might be feeling because they don't know how to have conversations around some of um the challenges that our students are having that are people of color, black. Um, they don't know what to say, right? So I mean, I remember when I I I said my father's black and the lady said, a a person said to me, oh, my God, why would you say that? And I'm like, oh, my God, why wouldn't I? I don't know, he's black, I'm white, I don't know. Um, why is it offensive to you? It's odd to me. Um, I don't know. So I think that that was, um, I think that was pretty powerful, what he said. And I think that he's looking for something um that I think maybe each one of us can help each other with. So I think that's something with that, you know, that, you know, for us to sit down and, um, you know, there was a time years ago when this board did not do that, right? And that's where our workshops came from. And I remember being the one knew and this huge um book in front of me uh for a budget that didn't make any sense at the time. And I'm like, how come you all don't sit together and have a conversation about what's going on? Because that's what I need, I need to be able to sit with you and to conversate with you and to be able to connect with you in order to get to where we need to be. And that's one of the, that's what the workshops actually started from. So I I think that what Eric just said was super powerful and I'm in, I'm all in.
Good, good. Lee?
Yeah, my thoughts were also stemming from what Eric shared and then what Candace just built on. I was very much intrigued, Joel, when you shared the action plan. Um, can you tell me what the name of the district again? I'm sorry, I forgot. In New Haven. Yeah, I would love, I think we, there are so many things that we can be doing and that we should be doing. And so I really like the idea of us coming together to have some sort of common vision. And so I really like the idea of us coming together to have some sort of common vision for five years from now, where it is we need to be as a district. And here are the ways that we are going to get there. And then once we have that action plan and that vision, I think it's going to help us better determine what to prioritize, when, where to spend our resources along the way. So I, that would be something, if we do have another meeting and we come back together, I would love to have some sort of firm plan, vision and action over the course of obviously several years, because we're not going to get this right overnight. But I think having that to both guide our efforts and hold us accountable could be really helpful.
Yeah, that's good, that's good. Well, we'll definitely put this on, well, Jeff and I'll look at the agenda for, for Monday, but we'll, but we'll definitely try to put some more time on for, on Monday. So you can have this conversation, you know, I mean, I, I'm all for it. I, I think it's, it's great. And because we're missing a couple of key people too, that were, were here, so some other board members. So we should do that. Joelle, is there anything that you wanted to, to say and, and wrap up here?
I essentially want to be supportive of you all moving to a place where you feel comfortable in where you are and uncomfortable with the fact that as, you know, as, as some folks have identified that they, that there's not clarity in action. And I think a lot of that has to do with communication. When you put yourselves out there and you tell other people what you're doing, then you've committed to it and they will hold you accountable. And so yes, the learning process will happen all the way through, continuous learning. There's not an end, if you will, to the awareness steps, but to the point of wanting to be able to, you know, to get moving. If you tell someone, you'll be held accountable. So I hope that the slides will be helpful to you in terms of your conversations. And I will, I'll try to grab the link from the New Paul's action plan so you can see the full thing. They, it's a PDF, it's actually right online, so.
Good, okay, all right. That's, that's good. So everybody ready to call it quits here?
Thank you, Joelle.
Appreciate it, Joelle.
Thank you, thank you, okay. So Jamie, you want to make a motion to adjourn?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn, please.
Anybody like to second that? Candace will second that and all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Good, thank you very much.
Thank you, Joelle.
Thanks.
Welcome, good night.